This leadership that they may have graciousness, love, kindness, and have your wisdom as they make decisions that affect this community and all the people that live into it. And dear God, we pray especially this evening for the people of the Ukraine as they are forced and facing war, that they may find peace and reconciliation. In the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, roll call Debbie?
No.
Fudge.
Fudge.
Fudge of allegiance.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. A little bit wrong. Okay, Amy please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the code for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Yep, I got one going here. Yes.
Councilman Purdon?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Here.
Councilman Corey?
Here.
Councilman Gibson?
Here.
Councilman Forbes?
Here.
Okay, I understand Mike has something on the agenda he'd like to address.
Yeah, just a small change I wanted to see if it was okay to add a walk-on to discuss Terry Street pedestrian crossings under mayor and council member items. That way there can be public comment at the earlier public comment.
I make a motion to do that.
Second.
Roll call Debbie please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purden?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, welcome. Y'all find a seat and we're about ready to roll here. Come up with the public comment. If you all want to line up, we don't want to be here all night. It's dark out. Thank you.
And I'll just remind the members of public coming up, if you are here for the Benita Diner, special exception for alcohol abuse, that will be a special, that'll be a separate public hearing immediately following the public comment.
Can I make a point? Wouldn't we be better off to let these people here our consultant to give the rationale for these different concepts and what's legal and what isn't before they get up and make comments on redistricting?
We're not, wait, wait a minute here. We're in public comment on an agenda of items. It's been that way for, it's what's on the agenda, Fred.
We could do it that way if we chose to do it. So if we don't want to do it, that's fine. But I'm just saying.
Not tonight. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and thank you Councilman Gibson for the walk-on addition to the agenda. My name is Deborah Giambbo. I live at 27285 Bell Rio Drive, which is just off of West Terry, where there is a crosswalk. In the middle of that crosswalk 12 days ago is where my husband was a pedestrian victim of a hit-and-run. The, I also faced the car coming right at me and managed to pull back, or I would have also been a victim as well. I come to you because I have been in communication with the police who seem to be doing very little with the information we do have about the person who did this. I also come to you after four years of emails to the city about the need for safe crosswalks. Ironically, or maybe predictably, about five years ago, my sons then in middle school, my nephew also in middle school, and their friend in middle school, and my husband and I stood in the same place, talking to the city council at that point, saying that we need crosswalks because they didn't exist at that point except near the middle school for safe passage for children going to and from school and for pedestrians and bicyclists. At that time, the cars would speed up. My sons had people put their middle finger up them and shout curses at them as they were waiting with their backpacks, their school uniforms, and their trumpet case to cross to go to school. They even saw a sheriff pass them as they waited in the crosswalk, as I did also the day before yesterday, and the sheriff behind that sheriff who passed me in the crosswalk did not stop the other car coming in the other direction that flew by me in the crosswalk. So no, there's no enforcement of this, except I did see an electronic sign there today. So not much has changed since before we had the crosswalks to now when we have the crosswalks, except a few drivers do stop, a few. Drivers who look at me directly in the eye, speed by. So it's not that they don't see me or the small sign that we have that says that it's a state law. Someone flew by me in the crosswalk and then pulled over and cursed at me because I was waiting in the crosswalk while cars piled up behind her in line, saying that I should not be near the road as a car goes by. So after four years of emails about the dangers of the crosswalks and nothing being done, I implore you to do something about this. I'm not sure if we were waiting for an accident to happen, now we have one. I hope we're not waiting for an accident with a child trying to get to and from school. We need your help, and I implore you for that. The crosswalks that are currently in place are not the crosswalks that were originally approved by city council. Those crosswalks were raised crosswalks. I looked at Alta's plan from 2016, and those of course are the more expensive crosswalks, and they did not get installed. That way, if we had raised crosswalks, cars, drivers who don't care about pedestrians and prefer never to stop for them would maybe at least care about their car and have to slow down for us. We need those raised crosswalks, and we need lights as well. When the flat crosswalks were installed, the conduits for lights were also installed. So the cost to the city to install lights would be relatively minimal at this point because the road doesn't need to be torn up. Those conduits are already there. The pocket park that was planned as part of the West Terry project has not yet been installed. There is possibly money in that project that could be redirected to what I'm proposing to you. We also know what's happening in our city, the growth in our city, the raise, the increase, sorry, I'm just about finished, the increase in the tax base. So the city has more money than ever before, and I'm asking you to use some of that money. In addition, I know that you're applying for grants for improvements to East Terry and potentially maybe some of that money could be directed to this. So I implore you to please uphold the oath that you made to the residents of Bonita Springs, the intent of which was to serve and protect us, and I ask you to do something now before something worse happens.
Thank you, ma'am. I feel, ma'am, I feel sorry for you and your husband. You gotta be careful out there. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, hi. My name is Denise Lucia, and I also live on, off of West Terry on Bell Rio Drive. And I'm a little shaky right now. I'm gonna try to remain calm because I had not known that this occurred, and I actually myself was going to contact the news station about the traffic on West Terry and that no one stops. And just two hours ago, I have on my phone a video of my child almost getting hit. I've had to change my job so that I could be home in time for the bus to be there to make sure that my daughter doesn't get killed. I had no idea that this injury had occurred and my neighbor was almost killed, and someone ran him over and took him over. I'm very proud of my city. I'm very proud of that we've paid such attention to the beautification, but I also don't want it to be where I'm picking up my daughter's body out of a ditch, and if I say I told you so, that doesn't help me or anyone else. So I just implore the same as the nice lady before, is that someone please do something to save the people that are just walking and trying to enjoy the beautification that we all tried so hard to make. Thank you.
Thank you, dear.
Good evening, council members. For the record, Dwight Estman, Paradise Road. I skipped last week's meeting, or last meeting, so I'll, but I'll be brief this time too. Regarding the redistricting discussion, I feel like alternative one is the least disruptive, the one I prefer, and it has the least deviation of any of the three plans. The other two alternatives are more drastic in that they move my neighborhood into District One and move all of Pelican Landing into District Four, plus larger sections are moved out of D six into other districts. Part of that reasoning was continued growth, but there will be continued growth in every neighborhood in this city, even downtown, as more apartments are built. So it seems foolish to attempt to estimate where population is going to grow rather than use the facts as they are now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwight.
My name is Joe Calabrese. I live in Arbor Strand in Bonita Bay, and I too am favoring, favor the first proposal for redistricting. I do not favor lumping Bonita Bay and Pelican Landing in the same district. It doesn't seem appropriate. So that's my feeling. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Was that a hit-and-run by any chance?
I am, I am the victim of hit-and-run. I'm just here to remind you, I don't know, I know that I don't have to tell you what your job is or anything like that, but very few of us are pedestrians around here or ride our bikes, and it's hell out there, I have to tell you. Okay? I give you, I'm gonna give you just an overview of what happened to me. My wife and I were waiting where our dogs to cross the street on, with this, in the crosswalk, which has a sign that says, there is the law of the state, that cars have to stop when people are waiting to cross. We waited and waited and waited, nobody would stop. Cars would go and go and go, and nothing. Okay? Finally, someone, finally, the, the person that was driving the opposite side of the street started to slow down and stop. The man that was driving this way, where I was gonna cross first, started to slow down, and I presumed that he was gonna stop. I, I started to walk to cross the street, waving my arms this way with a green, bright shirt so that everybody would see me. I'm crossing, I'm crossing, this is what I, what I was saying. All of a sudden, I hear my wife screaming in back of me, and she said, Luis, Luis, watch out, watch out, wait, 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 watch out. I was almost crossing in the middle of the street, almost with my right foot on the yellow line on the other side of the street. The car that I thought was, was slowing down instead went faster, sped, just the way they used to do to our kids when they tried to cross the street. Okay? They would speed up, and they would go this way, to my kids, okay, and the other kids in the neighborhood. So the guy just went by, hit me, I fell on the ground, lost consciousness for a while, and then I started dragging myself on my foot. I saw that my foot was broken, my leg was broken, and so I started dragging myself towards the side of the sidewalk, towards the sidewalk, so that I wouldn't get hit again. Because the person that I was behind the guy who hit me, he just went, took off. We never saw him again. And the person that was behind him stopped to give my wife his, her business card to say, and she said, I'm a witness, you can call me. And in the meantime, while she's doing that, the guy behind her is beeping his horn like crazy, telling her to get off the road, to get off the road, meaning that he wanted to pass and he would run me over, just like that, just like that. It's hell out there, like I, I'm telling you. Okay? I don't know if any of you walk or ride your bike in this neighborhood, but it's not very welcoming to people that come in this area.
The car that stopped for you originally, he stopped, he helped you?
Never stopped.
On the one car on the, going the other direction, he said he?
Oh, the, the car stopped so that I would cross to the other side, but at this point, I was very afraid to cross to the other side. What I did was, I went back. I, I crawled back with my hands, and, and I got to the other side, and, and that was it. We never saw the guy, the sheriff, the deputy, my wife gave, gave, I'm, I'm almost done. My wife gave the, the deputy, the, the business card of the woman, he went off, I don't know, unlicensed after that. It was on a Friday, it was a long weekend. His weekend was longer than usual, I guess, because it took about a week for him to get back, when my wife said, do you have the number for the, for the woman? Why didn't you put her in the report? I want to talk to her so that, so that she doesn't forget, because you have to remember, you have to write things down so you don't forget when something happened. He says, I didn't call because it was a business card, and I start working at 6:30, and I assumed that the business was closed.
Okay, well, do me a favor, call 477-1000 and ask for Captain Blake Lee, like in Lee County. He's in charge of the South District. And if you don't get any results from him, you call me at 992-3018.
I appreciate it.
Now, I, I work on Hickory Boulevard, picking up palm fronds and beer cans and everything else, and I go across Hickory Boulevard maybe half a dozen times a day. And you gotta wait for a break and then go fast. Some people stop, some of them don't. You gotta assume they're not gonna stop. When I was 20 years old, came to an intersection, the guy had his right turn signal on, and we went, we went across, and he wasn't gonna turn, he just went straight and hit his broadside. So don't trust anybody. Trust God, rest everybody pays cash.
Right.
I really feel sorry for you, and I think Captain Lee will do something for us.
Yeah, he's on, he's on leave. My wife called because he, we didn't get call from the deputy, and so I said, maybe you should call Lee County Sheriff Office. And then, then the sergeant in charge told her that he was gonna talk to the deputy, and he, he was gonna go, talk to us. And so he called, and she talked to him, he had not done anything.
And I had left him a message.
He had met, we, we left message every single day since the accident happened, and he never called, obviously because the accident happened, you know, and the only number that he had was a business card. Although we called the number after he gave it to us, and there was an answering machine there, he could have left the message in the machine, just like we did.
Okay, well, talk with Captain Blake Lee, he's the captain for South District.
Okay.
And he, everybody works for him. Okay? If you don't get any results from him, you call me.
Okay.
992-3018, that's my home phone, and leave a message, I'll call you back, believe me. This time of year, February, March, look out, you know, here.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir. God bless you.
I'll, I'll finish with, with this, with this last thing. The deputy made me very upset because he said to my wife that there was not much that we can do, that, that this is supposed to be the new normal, that people are getting hit and run around here, that is, is a common thing. It scared the hell out of me because I, how can that be normal? That people, you know, it's, people are running, people over on the streets and nobody's doing anything? So he said, oh, you know, there's not much we can do. My wife is trying to tell him things that, that can be done, but he refused, but I appreciate.
Mention that to Blake Lee.
Okay.
And making excuses before they, you know, doing anything, so it's a sad state of affair, okay? Keep up the good work.
All right, thank you.
I'm, I'm on your side.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I voted for you, by the way.
Okay. That helps. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name's Darren Rumbold. I've had the fortune of living here for 18, 18, 19 years off of West Terry, and I want to thank you for listening to us tonight because we want to get this off our chest. I too am very concerned about the, the road traffic. We welcomed all that money that poured in to make West Terry so gorgeous it is now with the wider sidewalk and all the vegetation, but I won't use it this time of the year. I won't cross West Terry this time of the year. I walk my dog, can't do it. There's just no way I'm gonna be able to cross West Terry. I want to point out that the, what you heard tonight about people ignoring you, even if they're staring you straight in the eye, that's true, there's no question about, they'll pass you by, but there's also some other issues at West Terry with regard to the new plantings. You're gonna need to talk to the landscaped architect because there's a couple of areas where they put the plantings in around the walkways that would obscure the people standing there. So you've actually created an attractive nuisance, and you're gonna get somebody really hurt unless we put lights there. Now, you recognize this up at the turnaround, the roundabout, that we've got lights there that light up, and no one can miss those. City of Fort Myers Beach recognized that, they've got lights out there, and no one goes through those lights when you go out to the beach. So I would again recommend that we put some lights in on West Terry before somebody gets killed.
Okay, city manager, who's in charge of this traffic safety? You're the boss.
Are you, are you asking about the actual traffic control system?
Yeah, yeah, how can we improve that?
Well, we, we've got a couple, a couple of different ways we can look at it. First, we can continue our conversation with Lee County Sheriff's Office to have enhanced enforcement in the area. We can also look at what other improvements we can look, could be done to that streetway. We'd have to talk with our engineers.
Well, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Skylar Posner, daughter of Denise Lucia. I'm sure you're tired of hearing the traffic situation on West Terry, but thanks to my mom, I've gained the courage to stand up and speak. Every day I walk home from school, and I use the crosswalk to get to Bell Rio Drive just to get home. And like Deborah has said before, I am, it's common to be cursed at, it is common to be flipped off, it is common to have people stare you in the eyes and just pass you by. And honestly, it's very scary because some days I'll have people stop on one lane and the other lane, they'll brush right by me, and that's what happened today. I'm sorry. I, it is very scary 'cause I want to make it home alive every day, and sometimes I'm not sure if I can. And I share these fears with Deborah's son Freddie in my classes every day. And I would just like to graduate high school, and I would like these crosswalks to be safer for both me and my friends to cross.
And again, please call Captain Blake Lee, South District. He, he's in charge of this. If he gets enough information, tell him the mayor told you to call him, okay?
Yes, sir.
We'll get some action, we'll get, we'll get some action.
I hope.
I know we will.
Yes, sir. I hope the redundancy on this West Terry issue will bring the, like, will show how important it is just to get this fixed.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
On a lighter note.
I just lost a few pounds. Thank you, mayor, if you're noticing. Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'm here to speak on the issue of redistricting. I've spoken before, but I'll, at the workshop, but I'll kind of make the same points, I hope, that I made the last time. I want to speak in support of the alternate redistricting plans, two or three. Two of the three redistricting plans that the council will be looking at have recognized perhaps the fact that District Four is currently configured, perhaps could be reconfigured to be a little bit more inclusionary as compared to the present plan or the present functioning of District Four. I want to make it clear, very clear, I'm not here to speak against any individual who currently serving or has served in the past. Redistricting is, is about making things better, making things more equal. It's not about necessarily saving somebody's position. We see that going on right now at the national level with all kinds of weird gerrymandering that's going on. I honestly believe as a resident of District, currently District Four, who is not part of a large gated community, that's time for people who do not live in gated communities to have an opportunity to represent their district. There are parts of District Four that are quite diverse as to ethnicity, socioeconomic status, and a multitude of specific issues unique to them. To put it bluntly, I believe the voice of these people from other smaller sections of District Four have simply been underrepresented over the years, and I think it's time to reckon, we recognize it and do something about it. Now, I am certain there are people who live in large gated communities do not want to see this change, it's common sense, because they have direct representation and they like that arrangement. Well, we would like to have an opportunity as well. Let those districts that have that commonality choose their counselor, while the rest of us in a new district choose ours. Again, this is not about exclusion of any one particular individual or office, but it's a plan of inclusion for many others. In my opinion, there is no justification for larger gated communities to have control of local elections, whether it's somebody from within that community or somebody they wish to endorse. To me, it makes good sense to place those larger communities into their own city district while other smaller sections of the now existing District Four can help create a new council which is truly representative of the city of Nida Springs and its well-known heterogeneity. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, for the record, my name is Barbara Ogle, and I live on Carnoustie Court, and I'm in support of the alternative number one. I believe that the two largest gated communities should be part of the city. If you put them together, then they really have no interest in learning about any of us or outside the gates or anything else. If you want to include everyone, then everyone needs to be able to discuss the issues, not only just for gated communities, but for everyone. So I believe that the districts should be separate, and it will include more people. The representatives do talk to the residents outside of the gated communities, and I think putting the two together will not have a voice for people. I think it will make the voice for people smaller. So, and also, I want to speak on the banana with skates for art in the park. I think that the banana with skates would be more appropriate at the skate park versus by the Lyles Hotel where you can see it from downtown or driving by Old Forty-One. I, I don't know if that's the image you want for people driving through the city, but it is a lovely sculpture, but maybe it's more appropriate by the skate park. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Good evening, city council. I have a concern similar to the earlier group.
Your name, sir?
Oh, excuse me, my name is Miguel Lopez. Oh, sorry about that. Anyways, I would like to continue. I've, recently had an issue where a fast car ran over my dog, and it's my fault as well for like just letting her run around the neighborhood a little bit, but more so there is a lot of children in my lane. And I noticed that just having speed bumps is helpful enough, it's simple and practical. And I'm just wondering, how do I go about putting a speed bump in my area to minimize speed, speeders?
What street is that?
This is on Red Bud Lane off of Livingston.
You know where that is?
We don't do speed bumps. The fire department explicitly kind of prohibits those. We could look at speed tables if, if you saw the need, which is a little, little different form of traffic control device.
What is a speed table? I'm not too familiar with that.
If you go to Maddox Lane, we've constructed our first two in the city, which is north of where you are, but it's essentially, comes up to a plateau and a raised thing. Without driving over it, it's very hard for me to explain it. Essentially, the vehicle plateaus out and then comes back down. It doesn't have the abruptness of a speed bump.
Okay, sure. And what would I do to go about like petitioning for that on my street? You said something, right? I'm sorry if I missed it.
We don't have, there's not, there's no dialogue here.
When we get your information, and then probably most likely you'd have to talk with your adjacent property owners along the street, and then you would work with your represented council member, you know, to, to discuss future improvements.
Who's, who's your representative? Jesse, Jesse, you'll get on it.
All right, awesome. Cool.
If you can fill out one of the?
Hey, I'm gonna set the, I'm gonna be completely straightforward because I don't want this to hurt feelings later. Getting consensus of neighbors is, is a very difficult task. Getting consensus of neighbors is, is a very difficult task. I've had about six neighborhoods who've tried to do it and they can't get everybody in the neighborhood to agree. So if that doesn't happen, don't be heartbroken. But if it happens, I'm happy to help you. But just know going into it, there's gonna be a lot of resistance because every neighborhood has come to me and tried this, including my own neighborhood, shot it down. So just knowing, just know that going into it.
Okay, and then as far as consensus, that would be everybody in the neighborhood or the majority?
Sign on, or I think, is it, is it, is it, it's like the-
Mr. Lopez, can we get your contact information?
Oh, okay.
Clerk, she'll, she'll get your contact information. We'll follow up with you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that was interesting. A, a, Mr. Attorney.
This is a public hearing on a special exception request for consumption on premises outdoors on, at Benita Beach Road for the Benita Diner. And since this is a quasi judicial hearing, I'm gonna go ahead and swear in anyone. If, if you're here on the Benita Diner case, whether you're a concerned neighbor or you just may feel the urge at some moment to decide you'd like to comment on this item, I'm gonna ask you, do you stand, raise your right hand and be sworn in? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? All right, I'm watching you all.
Okay. Staff presentation? Or introduction?
Good evening, council. Mary Zizo for the record. This is the Benita Diner Consumption on Premises Special Exception Request at thirty-six zero-one and thirty-six twenty-one Benita Beach Road. This request is to review the consumption on premises. The restaurant use is permitted by right within that zoning district. Staff does recommend approval. Zoning Board has recommended as approval as well. And the applicant does agree with the conditions we've outlined in the staff report. With that, I'll let the applicant.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Wayne Arnold. I'm here representing the ownership interest of the Benita Beach Diner. And we are here for the special exception for consumption on premises for this potential new restaurant on Benita Beach Road. And I have a short presentation that I think the gentleman can, can open up for me and I'll go through the short presentation if you wish.
Mr. Attorney, can I call for a vote on this? Or do we have to?
This is gonna be a public hearing and there, there were public comments by an adjacent neighbor at the, at the zoning boards. So I would recommend at least going through the presentation. It might actually relieve some of the questions that the public has on the project.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Can you all open that for me? Okay. I, I would note, we did have one public speaker at our public hearing. And I don't see the gentleman here, but I'm happy to give you a brief presentation. It's an exciting new restaurant concept.
Which one is yours, sir?
It's Benita Diner, Grady Minor presentation. That's staff, that would be the other one. I think she put it up in the upper corner, honestly. There you go. So, again, I'm Wayne Arnold. I'm here representing the owner. And with me tonight is Skip Fox. He's with the Restaurant Ownership Group. He is with Smith Organics and they are the developer of the restaurant concept. I have Maureen Minker, who's with MHK Architecture, and they're designing the facility. Mike Herrera from our office is the civil engineer for the project. And Jim Banks is here as our traffic engineer. So the property is a couple of acres. It's located just west of Windsor on the south side of Benita Beach Road. I'm sure you've driven by it numerous times. It's a vacant parcel of land. It's been pretty much decimated with most vegetation after Hurricane Irma. But it is in your Benita Beach Road corridor. The restaurant use is permitted by right. And it's already been approved, actually, for development order approval. It's awaiting this consumption on premises permit so that they can have outdoor consumption on premises in the courtyard concept that they have designed. So this is a little hard to, to read, but I'm gonna try to point out the features on this. So the restaurant building itself is located in the northwest corner of the site. So your corridor ordinance asks us to bring buildings closer to the street and engage the street. So we've done that. Puts the parking to the rear of the site, has one access point on Benita Beach Road. And then parking located in this area behind it, and then this is a dry detention.
Is there a slowdown lane there? Does that show a slowdown lane to make your entrance?
Yes, there is a right turn lane that will be designed for that.
Okay.
So this is a little closer concept of the building itself that sits up on Benita Beach Road. It's largely an outdoor covered courtyard area. So there's both indoor and outdoor seating, but there's a large covered courtyard area. And if you're familiar with Naples, this similar concept was designed called the Lake Park Diner. And it's, until recently, it was almost entirely outdoor dining with covered, louvered seating outside. Nice concept, especially with COVID. A lot of people choose to sit outside and dine. So this concept is being brought to Benita Springs because they also think that outdoor dining is a concept that's going to be well received here. So surrounding land uses, we do have some residential to the south of us and southwest of us. So that's one of the criteria for having to come before you for a special exception because we're within five hundred feet of a residence or church. There's actually also a church across Benita Beach Road in this location. Food truck sits in front of that. Some days, if you've driven by, you'll have seen that. This is sort of our conceptual elevations for the project. So what you would see from Benita Beach Road would be a walled courtyard. That's a, a prop for a vehicle. It's not an operational food truck or anything like that. It's simply a prop that can be behind a closed gate to, for security for the courtyard. These are views from the parking lot. You can see that this gated courtyard continues around three sides of the building. The restaurant, hard part of the building itself is separated from the residential area and the courtyard. So the outdoor diners are in an enclosed courtyard that's partially covered. And then they have the restaurant building that's between them and the nearest residence. You can see, this is another image looking on the east side. So this would be the closest facing side to a residential home. And you can see that it's entirely secured with a courtyard or solid walls. So that's going to minimize any potential impact to the neighbors. And I don't think there are any of the neighbors here to oppose it. This, again, interior to the courtyard, you can see some features. There's going to be bench seating. There will be dining tables. This area is a partially covered, louvered area that provides for inclement weather cover. It can be opened up and let sunlight in. It's a unique feature to their restaurant in downtown Naples. You can see that heavy emphasis on vegetation inside the courtyard. One of the concepts early on had a stage. It had some, some yard games and things like that in it. Those were removed after our first neighborhood meeting. Some of the neighbors were concerned about having that much entertainment aspect of it. This is truly a restaurant. It's not really a bar, but it does obviously serve alcohol as part of the dining experience. So some of the conditions that staff has imposed, talk about the kitchen being open during any of the alcohol service hours. They've limited our hours of operation. Set limits on only one musician could occur as just a soloist, as any type of live entertainment. And then the amplified sound that could be in the restaurant dining area would be controlled by the management. And as, if you read any of the transcript or saw the, the meeting, as your city attorney pointed out, you can't presume that somebody's going to violate your noise ordinance. So the presumption is we're going to abide by the noise ordinance and certainly intend to do so.
Yes, I read in there where if you have your speakers, they gotta point them away from the residence.
That's correct. They would be, yes, sir. And, and all those would, again-
John Dahmer says that's quite efficient as far as keeping the noise in the right area.
Yes, and it, and it should be. And I'll just point out, so on the site plan, all of this area in this location for the building closest to the residences, that's all solid building. That's part of the indoor dining, the restaurant, the bar. And then the outdoor dining is really in this area closer to Benita Beach Road, enclosed by the wall. So we think it's very compatible. We're in agreement with staff's recommendations. Your zoning board approved this seven-zero with the staff conditions. So we would hope that you can approve us as well. We're here to answer any questions for you.
Any public comment?
Do you have any council questions?
I have a question. Was there any consideration? I know that there has been issues with restaurants that have outdoor dining and consumption and live music, you know, similar to what you're doing. And I think in the past, when that's been a problem, an issue, that we've asked the newly requested operation to have a look, a look back. So for example, once you, once you have the, the restaurant in operation, that we could test to see if there's been any complaints for about a year. And if it, you know, if everything is good, what is going on in here today?
I don't know how to turn off my watch.
You turn off your phone. That's how you do it.
It is off.
No, completely, completely off.
Completely off. See red?
Uh, let's, uh, segue with this issue, come on.
Anyway, you have to power it down. No, but in the past, we've had like a look back, you know, if, if everything works out, fine. And they don't have a violation of the noise ordinance, then your permission to have live, live outdoor music, that's the only, I love the, I think there's so many good things here. So I'm not against the proposal, but I am concerned about whether it could be a disturbance because it isn't, again, having experienced with other, others, it's not that much fun to call a sheriff to say they have, it's hard to even execute that. So I wonder if there would be any, would you be amenable to having some kind of a look back and maybe the, the city could propose something like that? Because normally you don't have, that's where the problem comes. It's not where you have outdoor consumptions because you have live music. And even if that's one person, it's amplified. And that would be my concern.
Okay. Ms. Quomper, I'm not familiar with the condition you've imposed on somebody else. So I would maybe ask either Mr. Dahmer or Mrs. Zizo what that would be.
Jesse, would you like to sign in now?
Yes, sir. From a perspective of fairness, I, I'm not sure we can, I don't think we should hinder them based on how previous businesses have operated.
No, but the fact is, is they're, they're, they're in viol, they're not in violation, but they're asking for an adjustment to the side, the distances between residential and the commercial space. And that's where it comes in.
Right, but staff has stated that they don't feel that that's gonna be an issue. And there's nobody from public comment who's come and said that's gonna be an issue. So other than us, who's, who thinks it's an issue?
Well, it could be an issue for us, too.
Make a motion.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. No, bef, do you want to open it up to-
Roll a public comment?
Yeah, public comment. And if you decide you want to hear from staff.
Any public comment? Any other comment? Roll call.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Stanmeyer?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crumbah?
I have to vote no, though I, I'm not, sorry that it's passing. And I, I think there should be a provision to protect the residents, that's all.
Was there yes or no? No?
No.
I said no.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Okay, West Coast Navigation, they take care of our waterways and our signage for the canals and stuff?
Mr. Mayor, these are all, the next, the next five items are on your consent agenda?
I'd like to pull an item, and I've got a discussion context on another.
Oh, okay.
Which, which item?
I'd like to pull the skating banana. And I'd like to briefly discuss the, the inland navigation grant. And I'm only discussing it because being on the consent agenda, since there's been an issue raised by Collier on it, I, I just want to make sure that, you know.
Not the inland that you're referring to?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm talking about D, D, nine D. The FEMA grant.
If you're not, if you're not, if you're not opposed to it, then you can make a comment after, after the consent agenda passes.
Okay, okay.
So, so Mr. Mayor, you would, you would be taking item B now for discussion, the skating banana? And then voting on that and then moving the balance of the consent agenda.
Okay. My concern is that if somebody gets in there and jumps on and breaks his leg, what, what happens with the damage if something, I don't know how strong that's gonna be, but it looks like some of the kids ought to climb up on top of it and break. We have liability insurance or something?
Well, hold on a second. Do you want staff to give a presentation on the banana?
Skating banana?
First, and, or do you just want to raise a discussion?
I just wanted to separate it so we could do, I wanted it off consent agenda because I would like to have discussion on the skating banana.
Okay. My, my recommendation is take the skating banana because we already know there's gonna be comments on the balance of the consent agenda. So we can-
I would make a motion that we separate it. That we separated it.
We're just pulling B.
Yeah, you're already, you don't, you don't have to make a motion on it. It's, it's pulled. You can move the balance of the, you can, what I would recommend now is move the balance of the consent agenda. Discuss B, then make your comments on, on item C.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Stanmeyer?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crumbah?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Okay, Jesse.
I'm, I'm just gonna be honest with the, with the skating banana. It almost looks satirical in nature.
Satirical?
Yeah, like a joke. Like, I was surprised that they're, they're- Yeah, yeah, I mean, the art can be left open to interpretation. Listen, I'm not somebody who, you know, is a hater of the arts, but the reality is, this is, this is a banana on roller skates and you're asking us to spend forty thousand dollars. We spent three rounds on whether we could give ten thousand dollars to the Blues Fest last meeting. Now we're saying we're gonna spend forty thousand dollars on a roller skating banana. And then we're gonna put it in front of the Lyles Hotel. That is, people are taking wedding pictures in front of there. And we have spent millions of dollars. We have hundreds of thousands of people who go down there. And we aren't gonna get any new fans by having the Benita Banana down there. That's not a thing. I don't think it's appropriate. I don't think it's the right place. And honestly, for forty thou, I would, I would rather pay forty thousand dollars to not have that thing as the representation of Benita. I mean, that is, so, to me, it's an absolute no. But not only from a placement standpoint, from the statue itself standpoint, and then from a price standpoint, I can't tell people we spent forty thousand dollars on a skating banana. Can't do it.
Uh, I agree with Jesse. We can turn this down. We don't have to go along with the art in public places. I, I don't need it. Anybody else comment?
Well, I, I think since I sat on the, on the decision-making body there, art is definitely in the eyes of the beholder. And I have to say that the, the committee who are art-oriented, including artists and teachers, are, were enthusiastically in support of the piece. I look, I, I think it's kind of fun, you know, I mean, I think it's a whimsical kind of thing. And one of the reasons why I think it was attractive to the committee was because they have an interest in trying to get art that is of interest to younger people, especially children. This is, I don't remember if, what number this is, but this, this is like a, a second or third run of the same sculpture that's in place in various places around the country. And it's been unbelievably well-received by the community. Where they come and they take pictures and the kids love it and it's really fun. I think Jesse's comment that it may not be the best place for it, and there was a discussion that it might be more appropriate at the-
Around Forty-One?
Well, no, but no one wanted the old Forty-One, but by the skate park. But as you know, the community park and the skate park is not ready to receive any art at this point. So it is, and these, as you know, since we're moving art, art all over the city, if, there are two decisions that have to be made. Do, does everybody hate the, the art itself and you don't want the art? And if it is, then we should vote it down. If you like the art, but you don't like the place, then we could go back to the committee and say, can we, should we put it in the skate park once we get that activity, the, the work that's being done there? Because we can't put it down there because we're working down there. The old library has to have work on. We're gonna redo the, the thing, but we, we can move it at a later time. So I think that's basically what it is. But I'm telling you that the reports from where it, the original, I think the original, I can't re, I think it's in California where the original one is, they paid like a hundred and twenty-five thousand for their original. So this is like, do you remember what number this is supposed to be? So, this is like, do you remember what number this is supposed to be?
This is number, this is actually going to be number four.
And there's a limit on the number that they can...
There is a limit of nine that is being made. The most recent one that was installed was in Loveland, Colorado.
Oh, was it Colorado? Well, that explains it.
That's where number three is.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion that we shut down the banana.
Uh, I'd like to make a comment. This piece of art that's out front of the city hall, I don't like that one bit. That one that's in front of the Dixie Moon Hotel, Dixie Moon, I don't like that one at all. This one is refreshing, but still, it's not, I'd like to see the guy that's on top of the circle there, the brass guy, the pace, something, or the tie in the shoe, the ties that bind. There are some nice brass in, in the secret bench, there's some nice, I don't know what to call them, but I, I'm not enthusiastic with, especially those two that I mentioned.
And I'll just remind the council that, you know, some of the art that we get, we get, is donated, and, but there is funds set aside for the Arts and Public Places Board. So, I don't know if this, if this is already funded or available for funding, if that's a consideration.
They have CIP money.
Correct.
So, they have almost a hundred thousand dollars left for the year. This would be about half of that, but I don't care if it's a third of it. I don't think that that is a good spending of tax dollars.
And I'll second your motion, because I had the same feeling on the banana, so...
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Steinmeyer?
No.
Wait, 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 wait.
Aye to deny.
Aye to, aye to not do it.
You cannot do it. I go along with Jesse. All right.
Councilman Corey?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crumbah?
No.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
So, no. But I would like it moved to a different place, but...
Okay, motion failed.
Yeah, we can deal with that.
Four to three.
Moving along, moving along.
Wait, wait, so what was the...
It was denied, it's...
Four ayes through me.
It's four, three.
So, they don't want to...
Okay. And now, Councilman Purdon, you had a comment on item number C.
Uh, just on number C, really quickly, I don't want to get into the weeds too much, but the Collier County Commission made some references to some grant dollars that we are working on as a city that essentially is to be used during emergency operations only, which would help keep the communities in the southeast portion of the city safe. This would be done through South Florida Water Management District. They have the best modelers in the state. It would be only during emergencies, and, and they would be in operations of this at all times. This is not the same thing that we talked to them back in twenty seventeen under Simmons, and their, so their misconception was, we agreed on this back in seventeen, that you weren't going to do it, and now you're doing it. The reality, this is half the size, and this is something we've had in the CIP for five years. This is something for two years. We've been at all the regional meetings, saying that we're doing it. So, there was no, there was nothing from Benita Springs in any way, shape, or form that was underhanded, or an attempt in any way harm Collier Waters. This was simply an attempt to accrue the appropriate dollars, to ensure that we can keep our folks safe. And we've been in contact with them, and we will continue to be in contact with them as we move forward.
In South Florida Water Manag...
Management District, they're, they're looking...
They're going to take your responsibility for it.
They would run the whole thing.
To get us out of this.
Yes, yes. Well, this is a small project, but this is not, this, this is for one small piece, during emergencies only. This isn't our overall, this isn't the Big Cypress Basin, but this is as a result of them not letting us get into Big Cypress Basin, this was pretty much an emergency response. What do we do with water if we can't, if we can't do it that way? What are we going to do? And this is kind of...
Do you have a motion on this?
No, there's no motion. It's just, we just, it already passed. They were speaking about us at their meeting, so I'm sure they're watching this one, and I just wanted to reiterate, we plan to do no harm downstream. This wasn't in seventeen, so this was not our city in any way reneging, and this is simply an attempt to ensure we can procure dollars to keep our citizens safe. That's all this is, so.
Is that clear? Okay. Am I Kurt Spitzer, is he here?
He is. No.
Mr. Mayor, I am.
Mayor and council, virtually our consultant for our redistricting project, Kurt Spitzer, will be providing a presentation. I want to reiterate that your green sheet states that we are not asking for you to make a decision on any of the maps this evening. This is your presentation. We, we previously had a public workshop to gain feedback. Since then, our consultant has made some tweaks to the modeling of the map number two, has created a two A, and he'll be discussing the, those changes, and, and the comparisons between two A and three, as well as he'll go through the criteria of one, two, and, one, two, A and three, of how, looking at the adopted criteria has, has performed these particular maps. Additionally, our staff attorney, Carly Sensomarino, provided you with the first of the list of public comments we've received, prior to what we'd be looking to see from council, if you wish to move this to an ordinance. And when we do so, we'll continue to collect those public comments. That would be part of the next draft of public comments received.
Okay. Kurt, are you there, my friend?
I am, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. It's good to be here with you, although, even if it's just virtually rather than in person. So, what I'm going to do this evening is to talk a little bit about the redistricting process, and some of the common criteria that are used in that process. And after that, we'll get to the draft alternative maps that we have prepared for your discussion. By way of background, my consulting firm has been around since nineteen eighty-nine, and over the past twenty years or so, we have redistricted twenty-five or thirty Florida local governments, cities, counties, school boards, ranging in size from the city of Quincy in North Florida, about seventy-five hundred people, to Pinellas County in the Tampa Bay area, which has almost a million people. So, redistricting is the process by which the legislative body equalizes differences in the population of the districts by making adjustments to the district boundaries. The legislative body in this case is the city council, or the city of Benita Springs, but it could be the Lee County Commission, or the Florida Legislature, but it's always the legislative body that makes adjustments to the district boundaries. It's important to remember, I think, that redistricting does not equal reapportionment. Reapportionment is the process by which Congress reallocates congressional seats to the states after each decennial census. I believe Florida gained one congressional seat this go-around. I think New York, the state of New York, lost a seat. Why are we doing this? Well, it's required by the city charter. The charter provides that you will consider the redistricting process after each decennial census. But more fundamentally, it furthers the principle of one person, one vote, as embodied in the Fourteenth and Fifteenth Amendments to the U.S. Constitution, equal protection and the right to vote, and then also in the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five, which implemented the Fourteenth and Fifteenth Amendments. There are some general guidelines for the redistricting process, or criteria, that we always consider. The dominant criteria is population. Districts should be as nearly equal in population as is possible or practicable, are the, is the term of art. There are other criteria as well, and we'll talk about all of these in greater detail. But we avoid plans that dilute minority voting strength, we follow census block boundaries, we try to develop district boundaries that make sense, that are easily understood by the electorate. And the way that we do that is, we follow significant boundaries, whether they're man-made or natural boundaries, water bodies. Districts are contiguous, they should be compact, we try to avoid splitting neighborhoods or HOAs, those sorts of things. So, let's talk just briefly about those different criteria. First, in terms of population, it's, it's impossible to get population equal between one district and another. We try to minimize the deviation from the average district size as much as possible. Generally speaking, districting plans where the districts are no more than three percent over or under the ideal population, the average population is a good target to try to attain. Population is, is people. Your charter refers to permanent residents. It's people, it's not registered voters. And when we have two districts with a population discrepancy of more than ten percentage points, that raises a red flag in the court system. And so, if you had one district that was over the average by seven percent, and another district that was under the average by, let's say, eight percent, that's a spread of fifteen percentage points. And that says you need to make some adjustments to your boundaries to get that discrepancy less than ten points. We avoid plans that dilute the voting strength of a racial or ethnic minority, and there are two ways that that most often could occur. One is termed packing, which is locating most of the minority population into a single district, so as to dilute the influence in other districts. Or cracking, which is splitting the minority population into two or more districts, so as to dilute their influence in all of the districts. And so, we avoid developing plans that either pack or crack the minority population. We use census blocks. Data from the Bureau of the Census comes down to the states in terms of, first, the state as a whole, then counties, then what are called tracts, then block groups, and then blocks. The smallest unit of geographical unit within which demographic information is contained are census blocks. Sometimes, they are shaped like a block, other times, they are not shaped like anything that has a right angle on it at all. They can be widely different shapes and sizes. In older, more urban cities, you'll find a higher concentration of blocks that are truly either squares or rectangles. In newer cities, younger cities, you'll find blocks that are less block-shaped than in older cities, which is the case, the latter is the case, in Benita Springs. The data is, is very important, is presumed to be correct. And the, the data is defensible, and it's presumed to be correct. In the out-years of a ten-year cycle, it's not uncommon to alter that data by supplementing it with other sources of information. But that typically doesn't occur until year eight, six at the earliest, or eight or nine in the ten-year cycle. And that's not the case here. We, we would just use the twenty-twenty data and presume that that is accurate information. We follow significant boundaries. We, to the extent that we can, recognizing that population is the dominant criteria, to the extent that we can, we follow existing district boundaries, and we follow major natural or man-made boundaries, water bodies, arterial roads, those sorts of things. It's easier to understand for the voters, for the electorate, it's less disruptive to precincts. And in terms of these major sort of features, such as the road, the boundary of the road is usually, not always, but usually co-terminous with the boundaries of census blocks. And so, you can avoid having to split a census block. There's some other criteria. Districts must be contiguous. We can't have District A in one part of the city hopping over District B and then continuing some other place. They have to be contiguous, although contiguity can be attained by crossing a water body. We attempt to keep communities of interest together, neighborhoods or HOAs, in the case of cities. In the case of counties or the state, we try to not split cities. And we try to avoid districts that have these so-called bizarre shapes, serpentine shapes. The, we've all remembered the term gerrymandered, which is, refers to a plan that was developed by the former governor of Massachusetts, where the, the one district looked like a salamander, and someone said, no, that's not a salamander, that's a gerrymander. That's where that term came from. There are some criteria that are embedded directly in the city charter. In the city charter, it specifies that there'll be six districts. They will be roughly equal in permanent population as is practical. And further, in the first odd-numbered year after the decennial census, the city will re-divide the city into six districts that are roughly equal in permanent population. We know that the census was, the twenty-twenty census was a little rocky this, this last go-around. The data that we used in the redistricting process should have been made available in March of this past year. We did not receive it until mid-August of this past year. But the data is, is valid, and, and is, you know, people who are in the redistricting world have been using that now since August and September of this past year. So, in summary, we have these various criteria, with population being the dominant criteria. It's impossible for anyone to develop a plan that can attain one-hundred percent compliance with all of the criteria. It just, it just cannot be done. And Benita Springs certainly is an example of that. So, what we do is, individual criteria are balanced in concert with each other. And so, we, we do the best we can, we try to keep these districts as nearly equal in population as is possible, and while still being mindful of the other criteria that are commonly used. Now, it's, it's sometimes a challenge here in, in Benita here, and we'll talk about this in, in greater detail. When I'm done with this PowerPoint, I'll, I'll jump over to the software, and you can see live examples of some of these issues. But just for the sake of discussion, let's say that we were interested in moving some population from District One to District Two. And District One is this reddish-colored area, District Two is this bluish-colored area, and this teal area here, which is the closest census block to District Two, this is a census block. It's not square, it's not a rectangle, but this is a census block. And as you can see, it, it has another block embedded in it. And so, if, in this particular area, if, if, just for the sake of discussion, if, if... if if one wanted to move some area from, of this population, from District One to District Two, it's very difficult to do that. We we, we try to avoid splitting census blocks. There are times, if a city has annexed an area sort of in the midst of the decennial cycle, sometimes part of that area that got annexed may not follow a census block. And in that case, you're, you're, you have no choice but to split the block and make estimates as to how much of that block's population must must go inside the city and how much outside. But this, that's not the case here. And so we would try to not split city census blocks in this case. But this is an example of of one of the challenges that we have in the process. Here's another challenge. This is a a map of the city with the the white areas are all of the neighborhood associa-, I'm sorry, homeowners' associations or other types of neighborhood-related areas. And so if one policy decision is to not split a a neighborhood, this can illustrate some of the difficulty of of being consistent with that policy in some areas of the city, not all, but in some areas. So our agreement with the city was that we would prepare a total of three maps. The first, we've actually prepared four. But the first step in the process is to take the existing district boundaries as they exist today and then layer the 2020 census data on top of those districts to see if we're out of balance. Maybe we're not out of balance, maybe, maybe everything's fine the way it is. And there are no adjustments are necessary to the district boundaries. Unfortunately, that was not the case. What we found here, if you look at the the table at the top of this map, District Three was under the average by almost seventeen percent. District Six was over the average by about twenty-five percent. So giving you a discrepancy of around forty-one percentage points or so. And so it's clear that you must adjust these district boundaries to get that discrepancy between the largest and the smallest down, under ten points, if not less than that. So, but what, how does that happen? Well, District Six needs to lose more or less two thousand of people. District Three needs to gain more or less fifteen hundred of people. And you can see the other districts there on, in the table, what they need to lose or gain to have a compliant plan. So we prepared three alternative plans. And they sort of embrace some fundamental policy decisions that that you as the legislative body will need to consider over the next few weeks. First, the first plan, alternative number one, attempts to keep the the existing shapes intact to the extent that we can. And so District Three grows to the, and let me mention the symbology here first. Excuse me, I should have done that before. But this is the, but jumping back to the current plan, the symbology here, the shading are the existing districts. The yellow is District Six. The greenish area is District Three. District One is this reddish area. District Two is the blue. District Five is this orangish area. And District Four is is purple. That stays the same with all of the plans. So you can see where the existing districts were and how they might be changed. And so in this case, District Three currently stops right here under this proposal, alternative one, as an example. District Three grows to the east to this dark black line, which is I-75. And so in a similar way, District Four has shed some population into District One. There are some minor changes in shape between District Two and District Five to get these populations closer to one another. And in this plan, the deviation is is just over eight percentage points between the largest and the smallest district. The two other plans, alternative two and alternative three, the underlying policy decision there was to make the shapes of the districts more compact. As you can see here with the existing boundaries and even somewhat with this proposed boundary, but this is not compact. And and it's it's difficult to make some of these changes in part because of the shapes of some of the census blocks and the existing, the existence of multiple homeowners' associations throughout the city. But alternative two moves all of this area in currently what is the western area of District One into District Four. And so District Four is most of the western part of Bonita Springs. District One then is more compact than what it was and comes over east and captures some of what was District Six. And then there are some other changes between District Two and District Five to equalize that population. I'll come back to Plan Two in a second. In a similar vein, alternative three makes similar changes to the plans. It fundamentally moves this current area of District One into District Four and then makes similar changes here between District One and District Six. What District, how two, District Two, I'm sorry, alternative two is different is that we have, we seek to under-populate District Six to the extent possible, since that is a very rapidly growing area of the city. And so District Six is underpopulated by three percent. If this plan has a spread of under ten points. It's termed Two-A because there are some slight modifications that were were made to this plan over the past week to get the discrepancy between the largest and the smallest district under ten points. But it is largely the same as what you saw originally as alternative number two. But it does, it, Two and Three have more compact district shapes. Alternative Two also under-populates District Six to the extent that we are able to. So in summary fashion, these are the statistics for the three alternative plans. Alternative One has a spread between the largest and the smallest of eight point one-eight points. Alternative Two-A, nine point four-four points. And alternative Three, eight point nine-six points. So these are the the plans right now, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm happy to answer any questions. I I think I might jump over to the the software and and still, let me see if there are any questions right now. And and perhaps I could answer questions by flipping back to a particular slide or I could jump over to the redistricting software to illustrate some questions for you.
I have a question. Kurt, Chris Corey from District Four. You said you, one of the alternatives, I think, alternative Three, underpopulated District Six based upon anticipated population growth. However, did you also take into account population growth in District One for the London Bay developments up along, I mean, what am I trying to say?
Coconut.
Coconut.
Right. Let me, let me jump over to the software and I can, I think I can better answer that question. You should be seeing, are you seeing another map now?
Not yet, no.
How about now?
You're you're full screen right now.
You are full.
Your video.
You, like your face.
We're just saying you.
Nice mustache.
Oh, well, I didn't do that. Someone flipped me out here. That had happened just before I tried to switch to the the redistricting software. So whoever made that adjustment, if you could adjust it back. Then I'll stop sharing and we'll try again here.
Yes, Kurt, this is the mayor, Rick Stein, mayor. Originally, we were supposed to have fifty-six thousand people in the Bonita Springs. And then it was fifty-three thousand. Are you familiar with that change?
I'm not, Mr. Mayor. This is, this is what we had from the Bureau of the Census. I'm not familiar with a a different number. I don't know, who who produced the the higher number?
Kurt, I can explain. So so each year, our revenue sharing and and state funds are based on the University of Florida's Bureau of Economic Opportunity. They provide a a best-guest estimate to us. They had provided a projected population that we would be. What happens once the census numbers come out, then they become the the certificate, the certified number you use for your population. So even though there was a per-population projection that we would be at that higher number, the actual census numbers came in lower and that is the number you are required to use for the redistricting.
Okay, thanks for the clarification, Charlie.
So the the Beaver is, we've worked with folks there and they're, they're very, very good at what they they do. And but the city manager is correct. The, once the census comes out, every ten years Beaver will make adjustments and and to to follow the the census numbers that, once they're released. So the 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 question was, did we consider, you know, growth in other parts of the city like we did in in District Six? And let me just say that when we got to, got the population of District Six down to three percent under the average, that was a, that's a real challenge to to do this. And all of the populations of the different districts in Plan, you know, Two, Two-A or or any of the plans were were driven more by the reality of the shapes of the census blocks and following other criteria than hard estimates of future growth within each particular district. And so let me, let me give you an example of what we we came up against here. So let's, again, this is the shading of the existing districts. And this is, well, I'll shut this off. This, these fine lines that you see here are census blocks. They're all different shapes and all different sizes. And let me just click one on. So we'll tell you how many, in this particular area here, there's a total population of thirteen people. Seven have said that I am a single race, I am of a single race white person. Six have said that we are something other than a single race white or black person. In the census form, there are, I I was counting them up today. There are fifteen choices in terms of indicating what race you are. Beyond that, you can indicate that you're of multiple racial backgrounds. Two, three, four, or more backgrounds in race. So in this particular block, there are thirteen people who live here. Twelve had said, I'm of a single race. Seven have said, I'm a single race white. And then there's thirteen of another race. Now, this could be, in this case, five would have been of of a single race other category such as Native American, Pacific Islander. And then maybe one other person said, I'm of a multiple race background. But just to show you the 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 challenge here in this particular plan, let's say that we wanted to further under-populate District Six. One way to do that would be to move this area here from District Six into District One. Right? Well, there's twenty-five people there. But there's two-hundred-and-sixty-six people. That's a lot. And so if we were to move, you know, that many people into District One from District Six, well, in Plan Two-A, District One is already six-point-four percent over the average. So that means if I move that many people from Six into One, well, then I gotta figure out some other way to move a similar number of people out of District One under this particular plan into another district. It's like pushing in, you know, the side of a balloon. You push in one side and it comes out the other side. So that's the dilemma that we came up against. And so the 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 short answer to the question about, did we consider growth in other areas of the city? Well, we, we considered them, but we, but but we know that historically Six was the fastest-growing. And I think that Six probably will continue to grow more rapidly than the other districts. So we, to the extent- So we, to the extent that we could, we tried to underpopulate District Six while being mindful of the other criteria, significant boundaries, keeping the discrepancy between the largest and the smallest district under 10 points, trying to not split neighborhoods or HOAs. So that's a long-winded answer there. But let me give you one other example. This is the, this is the census block that was in the PowerPoint, this block right here. Let's, let's say we move this area from Six into One, and a logical consideration might be to move part of this area, you know, into an adjacent district, right? Well, maybe, maybe this lower area here of this part of District One. Well, here's the problem. It's not shaped, the shape doesn't lend itself to, to being moved. There's 868 people that live here, but the shape's all over the place. And so that, you know, it's, it's difficult to, to, especially when you have a, you know, census blocks that are shaped like this, that to, to think about moving parts here. Or let's say, in this plan, we wanted to look at other areas to shed part of, this, under this plan, this now is District One, other areas into, you know, District Five or District Two. Well, look at the shape of that block. I mean, it's, it's, it just, you know, it butts up to District Two, but it's not of a logical shape that you would consider.
Yeah. Kurt, I hate to interrupt you, but we've been here quite a while tonight. Can we take a break and you come back and finish up for us?
Well, I'm, I'm.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, of course. I'm, I'm just answering questions that, I'm, I'm done with my presentation.
You might want to poll the rest of the council to see if there's any other questions, because your next presentation is also likely to take a little while before taking the break.
Yes, Amy.
Do we have any notion of how the precincts are, or some of the other voting districts, how they lay out on the, on the maps?
So the, I can answer a little bit of that question. Kurt can augment it if necessary. The, Kurt, this is Derek Rooney, the City Attorney. The voting precincts are selected in combination between the county commission, the city in some cases, and the supervisor election. The supervisor also has to follow the census blocks. So it's a little bit of a, you know, we saw the sections earlier mentioning the charter provisions about lining up the precincts. Well, it wasn't clear to me, it's still not clear to me, whether those precincts are voting precincts or other precincts, because there are other existing precincts. But it's a cart-horse issue. So as we move forward and come up with redistricting, as the county's moving forward with redistricting, the supervisor will also be lining up his polling districts, but they'll more likely than not also follow similar lines with respect to census blocks. So they're, they're not likely to deviate substantially.
But are they likely to change from what they are existing now?
I suspect that they will.
They will, okay.
And then upon, upon a decision of council with an adopted map, staff will be forwarding that to the supervisor elections in preparation. Also to follow, Councilmember Corey, so staff, community development staff did create a best estimate of development that may, that will likely to occur within the next 10 years. That data was provided to Kurt as a part of his analysis, and we can provide a copy of those units that we looked at as well to council.
City manager, how many voting precincts are there? There's a lot more than six. There's quite a few.
I would have to check with the.
I guess three or four District Three. I mean, there's a lot more than just six voting precincts, right?
Kurt, I would have to check with the supervisor on the, on the number.
So they don't match up with the districts necessarily?
Right. I, I think the, the city attorney is correct. The, what, what happens typically is the supervisor will wait for all of the legislative bodies to be done with their redistricting efforts. Once that's done, then the supervisor will look at the new district boundaries and, and, you know, perhaps make adjustments to precinct boundaries at that time.
Okay. Any other questions, Fred?
Minor question. How much of a difficulty in arriving at these concepts did the not diluting a minority percentage play?
Well, we were very mindful of, of the, of District Two and District Five. And we, you know, some of the districts had to gain a population, but you do have a minority, majority district, a Hispanic district in District Two currently, and a strong minority influence district in District Five at the present time. And so we, you know, avoided plans that made significant changes, or certainly diluted the, the voting strength of the Hispanic population in those two districts. The populations all stayed roughly the same as what it currently exists now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor and Council, this evening, we're not asking you to make a decision on the maps. We're just asking if you would like us to move this to advertising of the ordinance, which would potentially be on, on March 16th. I think Kurt had mentioned to staff earlier that if there is any interest in this, you may want to think about alternative one and alternative two A, as three was sort of a combination of two, and then two, three, and two A. And it seems that the science is moving a little bit better to the two A, but that's not a requirement of this evening.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to keep all of them alive for now, just so we can consider them all.
Yes, yes.
You're not being asked even to whittle it down. You're just being, saying, these are, these are three alternatives in between now and the 16th.
Okay. Now, we need to get this, you get this done pretty quick, so that the elections coming up in June, they have to have your referendum. If you're running for office, you have to have your paperwork done by June, I believe. You said something about referendums?
There, we have to get this, everything over to the supervisor by June or July. I can't remember the date.
Qualifying is in June. The referendum deadline was in July.
Okay. So we gotta get this finished up.
May I just ask, Kurt, in alternative one, did you try to minimize the percent excess deviation for number six by doing another iteration there, using essentially the one as the basis, the starting point?
Well, Plan Number One did not try to minimize the, or underpopulate the District Six. As you can see, what we did was, we took some of the population currently in District Six and moved it into District Three or District Two. There probably is some wiggle room there in terms of moving some of the population in the northern area of District Six into District One, I believe. But that, that certainly, you could do that, to some extent. You could, you could get the, the population of District Six, the deviation from the mean a little bit closer to, to maybe 2% over, but every, every time that, and that would be in this map here, since you're, this is Plan One. If, you know, this population here, that's, well, it's not many, but perhaps this population here, there's a couple hundred people there, that could be, you could move that over there, then District One would gain that population and, and, you know, all of a sudden District One's going to be pushing the envelope there. But, but something like that, you could consider.
Kurt, I'd also like to just point out that the layout of District Four, when it was laid out this way, was done in a way to, to have a, one district that was, in effect, taking a look at Spring Creek all the way from its entrance into Astero Bay, back to the headwaters of Spring Creek, up along Cockle Shell and Paradise. So, you know, there, there is the, the concept that, and we're going to talk about later on tonight, that Spring Creek is a, is a tributary into the Astero River, and, you know, that we've, we've got to look carefully at development. So just a point that District is laid out to more or less along the lines of the Spring Creek Basin.
Would you like to adjourn? I ain't listening to take a break?
Well, Mayor and Council, all we're asking for is if you are willing to move this to an ordinance which began advertising.
I have a second.
What is the ordinance doing?
The ordinance is to adopt a map, and what will happen is you will adopt one of these variations on the 16th.
Okay.
No, not the 16th, the first reading, I suppose.
The first reading is of the 16th. You'll be able to accept public comment during that meeting as well.
So after we've talked about it.
April 6th.
We'll have to say, we think we'd like this one over the other ones. Okay.
You have two readings on the ordinance.
Correct.
I second it.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Councilman Purdon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeyer.
Aye. See you at 7:30.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Kurt.
Hey, Mr. Seven Thirty, we're back in order. FEMA.
Yeah, it is.
Hazardous mitigation. Who's that? Is that you?
Well, it's, it's gonna start with me, Mr. Mayor. So I'd like to introduce Pete Singh-Hoffin and Robert Gaylord from Singh-Hoffin and Associates Incorporated, and they have a presentation for you tonight to go over the city's portion of the drainage improvements, proposed drainage improvements for the neighborhoods surrounding the, the old golf course off of Paradise Road that we've been pursuing design with through a FEMA grant. And so they're gonna show you what they've come up with and what improvements it is likely to bring to the neighborhoods.
Yeah, improvement will help the whole neighborhood.
Yes, they'll go over the, the areas where we see improvement.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Thank you, Matt, for the introduction. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Pete Singh-Hoffin, and I have, Robert Gaylord is with me this evening to, to give you this presentation. As you might recall, we were here last June talking about this, and I'll get into a little bit more detail with that, but we've taken the project much farther along now, and we wanted to update you and let you know where we're at. Just to kind of refresh everybody's memory, we're working in the Spring Creek watershed. It's about 10.8 square miles, and it drains into Astero Bay. And the, the area of interest for us was on the far eastern end at the Benea Springs Golf Course, the old golf course area. The project objectives, we were to develop a hydrologic and hydraulic model and use that to analyze the existing flooding problems and also to evaluate various alternatives. And then one objective was to create a project that not only works, but also has a positive benefit to cost ratio greater than one. That was very important to meet FEMA's guidelines for grant, grant.
Did you interrupt? What's the cost benefit ratio?
You figure out the, the cost of the project, right? The construction costs and the land cost, and then you evaluate the benefit of the project. How many houses did we take out of the floodplain? How many streets have we reduced flooding on? Have we decreased the duration of flooding in some areas where we couldn't eliminate it totally? All those things factor in to the benefits of the project. So the benefits have to be higher than the cost of the project.
Thank you for that explanation.
Sure. And then the last part is final, design and construction plans. I won't spend more than about 10 seconds on this, but we all know that there is a lot of flooding in that area. And it's not, not only frequent in some areas, very frequent, but it lasts a long time, And what we identified, it's kind of Paradise Road, let's see, I got my laser here, Paradise Road here. There are a lot of, let me back that up a little bit, there are several choke points in the system, things that really restrict the flow from moving from the north and east part down to the south and west part near Cockle Shell and out to, to Spring Creek. Those pipes either are clogged, nonexistent, or way, way, way too small. And there are four different areas where we have those major clogs in the system. And then Paradise Road is a lot of driveways and swales, and there's not a really well-defined path out of the system. So the driveway culverts get clogged up, water backs up in the swales, backs up into the streets, and then it takes a very long time for it to find its way out. Just a little bit about the rainfall, and we're going back to the August and September of 2017. We all know about Hurricane Irma, but about two weeks before that, we had another major storm, lasted over about four days. It was almost the same amount of rainfall as Irma. Irma all occurred in one day. But we, there is, the Benea Springs Utilities Plant there, there's a rain gauge there, and there were about 12 inches of rainfall there for the August part of that. We refer to that as the Invest 92L Storm. And then a couple weeks later, Irma came, dropped about 10 inches at that location, at that gauge, in, in less than 24 hours. The Invest 92L Storm there was about a 25-year event, and then Irma was about a 50-year event at that location. But when you combine those two together, back-to-back gigantic storms like that, it was about a 200-year event. We looked at not only the Invest 92L plus Irma back-to-back, but we also looked at seven other storms, different frequencies or different probabilities of occurrence. And these go from a two-year all the way up to a 500-year. I think everybody's probably heard of a 100-year event. A 100-year event has a 1% chance of happening in any given year. So it is possible to have 100-year events back-to-back, but it's a very small, small percentage. This data was all obtained from something called NOAA Atlas 14. It's a pretty standard source of this type, type of data. So we looked at those seven storms, plus the 92L, plus Irma, and all of that was looked at for existing conditions, but also for the various alternatives that we looked at. And anytime you're doing modeling, you want to calibrate the model. In other words, you want to make sure that the model is predicting reality, okay? And the way you do that is you look at a gauge where there's measured, observed data, and then you set up the model, you run the model, and then you compare your simulated results against the observed. And we got just an excellent match between the model, the simulated, and what was observed. And this is at Old Road 41 at the headwater of Spring Creek. And so we, we got this really, really good match, which gave us confidence now that when we start looking at different types of storms, we can kind of believe what's coming out of the model. So back in June, when we met with you, June 2nd, we showed. So back in June, when we met with you, uh, June second, we showed you three conceptual alternatives. One was, uh, like conveyance-oriented, in other words, let's move the water out, another was, uh, heavily storage-oriented, and then a third one, uh, was a balance between those two. And, um, two of them, um, provided a benefit-to-cost ratio preliminarily, uh, greater than one. From, uh, from there, we got direction, uh, from the Council to, um, uh, because we did not work with the developer for those conceptual alternatives, and FEMA requires that any land that we purchase for their grant, we have to have a willing seller, the Council directed us to work with the landowner. And what can we do to make his land, uh, whatever we don't need, more usable? When we did our conceptual alternatives back in June, we didn't consider that at all. And so then we began, uh, meeting with the developer's engineer, and we went back and forth, and they were showing us the plans that they wanted to do, um, the roads they wanted to put in, the, the houses and so forth. And we worked with them and wrapped the city's needs around their needs, and we came to a balance, and it took quite a few iterations, uh, to get to that. And this is what we came up with. These are the, um, proposed ponds. The conveyance and storage alternative in June required about forty-four acres, but when we put everything in and considered all of the off-site impacts, we ended up needing about fifty-four acres. And that's what we're showing here, fifty-four acres. We were able to place one of the ponds up here, kind of out of the way. That left, that left these green hashed areas for the landowner, um, to do what he needs to do there, uh, to make his project viable. So our system works around theirs. When we included those developable parcels, we assumed that they were fully built out, we assumed that they would have to put in their own stormwater management system, and we assumed that they would fill above the hundred-year flood level. All of that was built into the calculations. We also opened up those choke points that I talked about. We, um, provide an outlet for the, uh, I believe that's the Benita Golf Course Villas down there, that really doesn't have an outlet at all, and it just floods very, very frequently. Um, the roads become impassable, and so what they need is a way for the water to get out of there. And so we incorporated that into it, we freed up the choke points. Then we added, um, uh, we didn't really add these, but we have to modify existing connections to the system, so we made modif, uh, made sure we didn't cut anybody off that was draining in that direction before. And then along Paradise Road, we added new connections. And these are fairly large pipes, uh, each of these are about thirty-inch pipes running across Paradise Road, and these help to, uh, pick up the drainage along Paradise Road and the areas that contribute runoff to it, and it gives it a place to go. Okay, so that it doesn't get stuck and just have to evaporate away. We've provided a positive outfall for it. And this is, um, up at the north end, um, this is, uh, Wild Turkey Avenue, uh, I believe that's, um, Fairway Estates, um, up at the northeast end. And, um, that, um, we could not find an outfall for that system, so that seems like another system that was choked off. And so we're making sure with this that they have a place to, to send their water. So how does it work? Well, this is, um, at Paradise Road, near Maddox and, um, and Wild Ibis, um, in between there. We were told at the last meeting, and, and this is substantiated by drone, um, footage and also photographs, that area is like a gigantic lake, and Paradise Road was underwater during, um, the ninety-two L and Irma period. And, uh, we're able to bring that down so that it won't flood for the hundred-year event. Uh, it'll, it'll remain, uh, pretty much dry for the hundred-year. And also, if we have that bottom chart there, is, uh, ninety-two L and Irma, and you can see how much we bring it down. The red dash line is the proposed, the blue line is the existing condition. The, um, roadway elevation is shown there as like a green dash line. And, um, so we're pulling it down quite a bit, it's coming down much, much faster, not getting up as high. And, and they, and these are pretty significant storms, so we've got really good protection in that area. This is the, um, um, the Golf Villas over, um, to the east, along Wood Ibis and, and Divot. And, um, and that's the area that just, um, uh, those poor folks there, the road, the roads flood very frequently, they come up, they're impassable, you got to have a passenger car, you can't get down the roads. And then it's not for an hour or two, it's days. And, um, we saw an email, one of the residents there just said this happens over and over again. And the reason, the roads are cut in pretty low, number one, but there's no place for the water to go, and so it just stacks up there. So we can put an outfall into that, but if we had to raise all the roads, this would become very unfeasible. So we can't prevent the road flooding completely in this area, but we can make it a whole lot better. They might have a day, like for a hundred-year storm, they might be, uh, the roads might be impassable for twelve to twenty-four hours, but then it should come down pretty quick. And then this is the Fair Winds, uh, neighborhood, and their problem during Irma is they didn't have an outlet at all. There was supposed to be one in there, but, but it didn't get constructed, number one, and number two, they, they went ahead and added, uh, an outlet, extended a pipe there, but it had nowhere to go. So it, it flows out of their pond, and then it goes through a pipe, and then it just kind of has to bubble up and join the, the roadside swell system. So we're providing a connection there, we're saying, okay, let's give it a place to go. Instead of trapping the water back there, let's give it a place to go. They still have their pond onsite, which they, their engineer designed, um, and got the permit for it. Uh, we're not touching that, but we're giving them a connection point where the water can go. So we'll still have some flooding, but again, it will come down much, much faster, and it'll be inconvenient for a much shorter time. This is the impact, um, uh, that, that the project has. And if you focus on the hundred-year column there, that's the fifteen inches of rainfall over three days. We take out, there's, under existing conditions, uh, we're estimating about fifty-three homes will get flooded. With the project, we, um, only have, um, thirty that might flood and twenty-three have been pulled out. So remember at the beginning when I talked about benefits, if we can eliminate twenty-three houses from flooding for the hundred-year, that's pretty significant, that's a big dollar value.
Okay, makes sense.
Now, the other thing that we had to be concerned about quite a bit was the off-site impacts. Basically, if we make any changes out there, we can do no harm. Okay, that's kind of the rule, the golden rule of drainage, do no harm. And, um, uh, if you recall, uh, back in June, I know it's quite a while back, uh, those conceptual plans we had, we were still concerned about off-site impacts. We had some, they were minor, but they were still increases. Well, by increasing the acreage from forty-four acres to fifty-four acres, we were able to eliminate those off-site impacts. So the yellow is no change, green is an improvement, red is an increase, and notice, we have no increases. This is the hundred-year seventy-two-hour storm. And this is, um, Hurricane Irma, so if Irma came through, we would not make that any worse, in, in most cases, we would improve it. So the project benefit is about twenty million, twenty-point-five million. The project cost is about seventeen-point-six million. That's construction costs plus, um, uh, land cost. The benefit-to-cost ratio is one-point-one-six, which is greater than one, which makes it eligible for FEMA grant funding. The downstream impacts, we have improvements, and then water quality enhancements, we think we improved the, the water quality as well because of all the storage in the system now. So, to summarize, we eliminate twenty-three structures, uh, from flooding for the hundred-year event, again, fifteen inches of rainfall. We eliminate flooding of Paradise Road between Maddox and Wood Ibis. We greatly, greatly reduce the duration of flooding at the Benita Springs Golf Course Villas and the Fair Winds neighborhoods. Uh, we provide an outlet for future drainage, so later in the future, if the city wants to make improvements to Paradise Road, uh, we have places to drain the water. Uh, same with Carnoustie, Wild Turkey, Wood Ibis, Maddox, we have places now for all that drainage to go. Uh, we meet the FEMA grant benefit-cost ratio greater than one, and we meet the FEMA grant, um, willing seller requirement. By working closely with the landowner, we've, uh, come to, uh, compromise, I guess you'd say, uh, something that works for the city, but also works for the landowner. And we'll take any questions, thank you.
Exactly what is the compromise that you come up with?
The compromise.
Are you allowed to say anything or no?
Well, the compromise is we shifted the water bodies, the ponds that we're going to dig. Before, we placed the ponds wherever we thought it would be the cheapest for the city to, to place them. In other words, we took advantage of existing lakes on the Golf Course property. And we now moved it to areas that, um, uh, were out, that, that left the landowner with, uh, a large enough piece of parcel, uh, to build in.
So, the landowner's willing to sell some or something, is it?
Yeah, based on our conversations with their engineer, this was something that would work, work for them.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, Mr. Singh-Hoffin's not involved in the negotiations on the acquisition, so, and we haven't come to any terms on acquisition either. At this point, where we are is, they wanted to move forward with their plans, they can form their plans to, to a plan that accommodates the city's acquisition goals. Before we move forward with actual coming with funds to acquire the property, we have to make sure that we are checking all the boxes, crossing all Ts and dotting all the Is, to make sure that we can still qualify for that, that cost-benefit money for the FEMA grant. So if we have an agreement in place with the landowner, that disqualifies us from the grant process. So we're working to, to come to that final r- result. And that has a lot more to do with the timing of the developer and what they intend to do because, you know, that, they have a plan to move forward, obviously they're not in this to develop for a city stormwater project, they're in this to develop their own project, so we're trying to figure out how we can meet those deadlines, and they're holding out right now for the LEI twenty-twenty application, see how that goes. And then after that, how that is determined, we'll probably come up, start working with them on numbers.
So we can extend this for unlimited amount of time?
No, no, not, not at all. What I'm saying is, they're ready to move now, we're, we're asking them to hold off until we can get through a few steps.
Let me explain something, you just signed a grant extension this evening on your consent agenda for this grant. The funding from the federal government, uh, is set to expire in February of twenty-twenty-four. So this is a two-step grant, which is what these gentlemen have designed this project based on, that had a cost-benefit ratio requirement and a willing seller requirement if you needed any additional land that wasn't the city's, which we do, fifty-four acres. So in this case, they have designed that, and we have a plan that, that the landowner would be willing to sell us that land. The second step is to go back in with a drainage plan and a cost-benefit ratio to FEMA to be reviewed. They have to review that and approve it for the remaining funds of the grant to be available to the city. Regardless of what our internal timeframes are, if you don't have that completed and construction complete at this point by February of twenty-twenty-four, there are no additional federal dollars available for this. Is that clear?
Yes.
Pretty well. And we're working on it, as you say.
I have a question.
Yes.
Could you just, um, let's see how I can ask this question, the, the, the original proposal that you, or concept proposal that you brought to us where there was forty-four acres, so you said you used, uh, some of the existing ponds that were on the golf course?
Yes.
And you showed this before and after modeling here, when you modeled it, did you say that you've got more red dots on that other proposal? Is that what?
We, we had some red dots on that.
Had some red dots.
Yeah, yeah, not for, for the one where we had the forty-four acres, we had, uh, a few red dots off-site downstream. Um, but we, we couldn't have any red dots, we had to get rid of all the red dots, basically.
Can you just summarize, like if you had those, uh, the modeling that you had the existing conditions, and then you had the, the expected conditions from the proposal, did they still have instances where they still got flooding, but it was reduced?
Yes, yes, we, uh, keep in mind that we looked at seven different storms. So some of those storms, there won't be any flooding maybe in most areas, but as the storms get bigger and bigger, you can't, you can't, you can't totally prevent flooding.
Totally can't, totally can't, you cannot totally prevent the pond, pond.
That's correct, but.
Because of the nature of the, of the roads that are there, which are
That's correct.
Kind of not, uh, built above, uh, the floodplain, basically, is that?
Yeah, yeah, if I could explain, like, in the, the Golf Villas area, um, out on Divot and Wood Ibis, those roads are maybe one foot or two feet at best higher than the water elevation at Old Road forty-four during Irma. Okay, that's number one problem. Uh, number two problem is they don't have an outlet. So we can't make their pond bigger without taking out all their houses, plus it's private property. So the best we could do for them was to provide them an out, an outlet for their system. And that, it doesn't prevent the flooding, the roads will still get wet, but it'll come down very quickly, and they'll be able to drive along those roads, um, um, within about twenty-four hours, even for a hundred-year event.
Thank you.
Water needs to flow.
It's got to go somewhere.
Got to go somewhere, you can't go down that fast.
No, it, it.
It's meant to go to, to the ocean eventually.
Or evaporate, go to the sky. When it gets trapped, you got to wait.
Come back, you know, come back. Okay, uh, what do we got to do now here?
I have a question. You noted in one of your opening comments that the acreage increased from forty-three acres to fifty-four acres, something along that line. So, uh, and that was to provide a capability to the landowner to be able to deal with stormwater from a proposed development?
The, the fifty-four acres, and I want to be clear about this, they're not the developer's ponds, okay? He will still have to provide his own ponds on those developable parcels, okay? Uh, the reason why it increased was we had to get rid of the red dots. The reason why it increased was we had to get rid of the red dots to make it easy. We had red dots, we had to get rid of them. And so we needed more acreage to make that happen.
Okay, I'm just curious as if the developer is getting a private benefit from the city in terms of the stormwater system that you're proposing?
I think the benefit that they get is if Paradise Road doesn't go underwater, that's a benefit for everybody, right? If they're putting a new development in an area that's known to be flood-prone without a solution, that's a detriment for them.
Okay, what do we need to do?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think we're not looking for direction tonight. We just wanted to update you on the city's plan under this grant. As I mentioned, there are timeframes. We'll probably be coming back to you in a future meeting to keep advancing, should you want to continue with this grant.
Does the city have some money to do some of this work besides what they're-
We have this in our CIP. We have some of the grant dollars identified, assuming that they are unlocked and we have our match. There's probably some additional funding that'll be required based on inflation that we see going on.
We're making progress. Yes, we're making progress.
Sure.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it, Mr. Mayor. I think the next item is the Terry Street item that Councilman Gibson asked to add on to the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The public comment was that, for items on the agenda, was at the beginning of the meeting. There's a request from members of the public to ask questions.
I'm fine. I'm fine with them asking questions, but procedurally, it was at the beginning, is what Derek said.
And perhaps Mr. Singh Hoffman can answer the questions privately in the back. I don't know what the questions are.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item was the item added for discussion, which was the Terry Street stoplight or pedestrian crossing?
Crossing lights, yeah. You know, so in light of what-
I'll handle it, don't worry.
Happened recently with the crosswalks. I was just gonna ask if there's anything we can do in the interim to get some flashing lights on the crosswalks. Because the original design for Terry included the speed table raised crosswalks, which later got taken out because council didn't have an appetite for them. But, you know, we need something extra there. I drive it all the time and I can attest that cars do not stop for people in the crosswalks.
So we, you know, we were aware of what happened, the unfortunate incident. I didn't know all the details. But we reached out to see how expeditiously should council give us some direction on installing some of the rapidly reflecting flashing systems. They would probably be solar in nature because there are not conduits that run under for those. And fortunately, there is an existing procurement contract that we can utilize through Lee County. And so we've reached out to vendors to get some quotes. And I think that would probably be the appropriate solution. As Arlene mentioned, we would want to have an engineer probably give us some simple coordination on the exact placement of those signs. But yes, I do believe that we have a vehicle that we can operate as quickly as we can. Obviously, materials in this current age are a little slow, but, so we don't have to go out to bid. We can utilize a cooperative purchasing system. And I don't know what else I was gonna say.
Where you push the button and it starts flashing.
And so being solar, we don't need any wire going under the street to be radio waves to activate both sides when they hit a button or-
Yes, and that's pretty common. So, and we do, the other thing I was gonna say, I remembered, is we have pretty sizable dollars for traffic calming and roadway improvements in our current capital improvement plan that could be utilized to procure this stuff.
Could I have a question? I'm glad that there is a procedure that we could make some improvements here. But I was troubled by the idea that there are safety concerns that are being raised. Is this in a specific area? Is there, are there many places like this? Not only along West Terry Street, but I think that we could kind of monitor that there could be a problem that we need to look at? The story, I mean, I don't know about the story, but it was troublesome to me that this is something that is ongoing and has been and that we didn't address it. That's the part that bothers me.
Well, we did with the design. We had speed tables and they were removed. And that was a concern.
Right.
We went with the stamped crosswalks in an attempt for heightened visibility.
Is this just one crosswalk?
There's six crosswalks that were constructed.
So that the six crosswalks have this problem? Or we don't know?
The crash data I've seen doesn't show any pedestrian incidents to this point, other than one with a bicycle, which was not really relational to crossings. But, you know, it's hard to say. You know, we heard some other folks that have had experiences. You know, we don't always hear that from the public. So, to answer your question, if we haven't heard it, we're not aware of it. You know, the one thing with this project, though, is there was a different technique that had been recommended. You know, council didn't want to move forward with that for, you know, for various reasons. So this is an acceptable solution. There is an ability to bring it to bear pretty quickly. We do have funds and should we get that direction, I think we can do that for you.
Excellent.
And I did want to update. LCSO, our community policing, placed the traffic device, the tracker, the stalker there yesterday. I think that was mentioned during the public comment. That will also give us back data as well on the traffic that's going on there. And they will document any speeding. They also will be working for some enhanced enforcement as well, some details there as well, so.
Where did he get it?
Bel Rio.
Bel Rio.
Bel Rio.
There's a crosswalk nearby.
Where's that?
Just west of-
It's about midpoint.
Benita Fairways, just west of Benita Fairways.
And this lighting instrument you're talking about, is it a sign that lights up or does the roadway lights up?
It's a sign.
Okay, because I just have to give one personal experience because you have a sign like that at Benita, you know, that new sidewalk you did crossing forty-one. And I tried to cross there on the crosswalks. I don't think anybody could, even though it was lighted, I could see when it was lighted. And I don't think the cars stopped there either because I had trouble. I mean, I'm not sure how effective it is, at least in my one experience trying to cross right there. So, I'm not saying you shouldn't do it, but maybe we should continue to look for something that-
Well, that, I mean, that's a common concern with a lot of these things. And this is where, you know, there's a whole realm of traffic calming. We mentioned with the gentleman that was talking about speed bumps, which we do not install.
Right.
But it really comes down to, you know, this is just a tool in the toolkit. You know, the final steps that you can, you can't fundamentally control, you know, what's going on behind someone's mind, behind the wheel. But, you know, the next step is something physical and we did have that. That's the raised speed table. You know, that's really probably the last thing that you have in the toolkit. So, you know, if you want to try an intermediate step, you know, the flashing light is probably a good option. And then if you hear the same sentiment, you're really kind of left with the option council took out the last time.
And a lot of people hear the speed tables, that it's raised, and they think of speed bumps, which are horrible. I hate speed bumps. But if the tables are designed properly, they're designed to drive over at thirty miles an hour, and that's the speed limit there. But if you're going faster than that, you feel it in the car, so.
And one thing I might suggest, you know, is if you want to see what those feel like, there are some in gated communities. I know Councilman Forbes has some. But if you want to see some on a public street here in Benita, the very first two are on Maddox Lane and they were finished last week, so you can drive over them. And they're like Councilman Gibson said, they're, if you're trying to drive fast, yes, you will not be happy about them. But if you're trying to drive, you know, slow and mindful.
And they do need to be designed, right? Because I have driven in some communities where they're not made for the speeds that the streets are. You know, you have to slow down below that, otherwise, you know, it's a good hit on the car. It all comes into design.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Number one, if we have a speed table, which I'm in favor of, where will the crosswalk be with relation to the speed table?
It becomes-
Will it be on the far side of it or will it be on the speed table or what?
Typically, if you're doing a speed table that serves as a crosswalk as well, the crosswalk is on the plateau of the table. It's on the table, part of the table. So, a speed table is a, you know, it's an angular ramp. I didn't describe it very well. I know you are. And then it comes to a flat tab, you know, plateau table that's about ten foot wide or more, and then it comes back down.
Two other thoughts. Are we going to only have one of these on Terry Street or we're gonna have a couple or what?
We haven't received direction from you either way. I think the inclination was for flashing lights.
Because we do have them in our place. Even when you hit them, when you hit them at the speed limit, it's kind of, you're not rocking around. But you have to hit them quite a bit harder to get a real jolt. I would suggest that you design them so you do get somewhat of a jolt if you go in at speed limit.
There's an FDOT approved cross-section for them and there is a range. And I think that's what Councilman Gibson was alluding to. If you meet the absolute standard, I think it is a considerable interruption. The ones we constructed on Maddox are somewhere in between. They're within the acceptable range, but they're a little less than the absolute max.
Okay, good. One other point. I think we immediately should get Captain Blakely, who will not be back till, I think it was April eighth, to put more law enforcement there until we get this worked out. And warning tickets should not be the thing, real tickets. To cost people money, that causes them to pay attention.
The last part, I agree with everything Fred said. The last part, I think, maybe we have discussion. But I think disrupting the current community policing operations while the captain is out of town, not a good idea.
Oh, no, no.
Well, because if they take people away and move them down there, those are people who are currently on patrol somewhere in the city. So they're not gonna bring new people in. So I'm just saying, as far as their schedule goes, let captain get back in town. So I would say at least another week or so and then maybe talk to him.
And I'm just gonna point out, we don't have any authority to direct the sheriff's department. It's, if you don't stop for someone in a pedestrian, it's a non-criminal moving violation, so.
Yeah, no, we have communicated with them that the traffic device is there as of yesterday and they will be conducting operations. And we'll continue to communicate with Lieutenant and Captain when he returns.
That we direct the staff to look into this further and clarify a preferred approach or maybe a two-step approach with the lights and then this other thing and then get an idea what it's costing, the timing of when we could get it improved.
I think, you know, given the sense of urgency, speed tables are not an immediate thing. I don't hear a consensus along those lines. And we have the ability to act as swiftly as we can and have already taken steps towards it for the rapidly reflecting flashing beacons, which is a tool that is in our toolkit we have installed. So to make your motion much simpler, you know, we would be looking for direction to just allow us to install those at the six locations.
Yeah, that's good.
Great.
Corey and Gibson.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilman McRumba?
Aye.
Councilman Pardon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
D twelve A.
Okay, next item is just, it's a public hearing to look at reduced fees. As you recall, we've been reducing fees for a period of time to come into compliance with state law requiring that we not carry forward certain amounts excesses. So, nothing magical. I don't see you proud for it tonight. So I'll leave it over to John.
I do-
Nothing succeeds like, nothing succeeds like success.
Yes, sir. Good evening. This is a continued effort for us to start reducing that building permit fee fund balance. And as a way to do that, council has asked us to look at more fees that we could be reduced. This current proposal would reduce our trade permit fees and also our swimming pool permit fees. When I talked to the building officials, these are the first two that came up to his mind. This is gonna be a continued effort until that fund balance is where it's supposed to be. So whether it's through reduction of fees or whether it's through increased software or services, there'll be somewhere we'll spend that money.
For the swimming pool and-
And for trade-
How many, how many different stages are involved or what?
Electric, mechanical, there's a handful of trades. I want to say there's four, five different trade permits.
Have people been obeying the rules and coming in and getting permits or they just, you don't know?
Well, we only know about the ones that-
You got insured and now that the prices lower, you know?
Correct. And the way that costs were shifting, it was, the swimming pool permits were a little bit out of line and needed to be reduced regardless. So as we go further along in this process and once that fund balance is down, we'll figure out what to do at that point. But this might be one of those that just stays pretty much where it is.
I want to say, I may have asked this last year, but that we can't use those funds to say fund your department for an additional two years and then get it back to zero?
Correct.
We can't do that.
You did it, yeah.
You do do it for the building department, but you can't do it for all of community development.
Okay, that's-
But you can't do it in advance.
Correct, I'm sorry.
Under the accounting rules of the state.
That is true.
And so the trade permits are gonna be a permanent reduction and the other ones we'll look at again in a year, I think it said in there?
Correct. And we'll see where it goes. I mean, all these things, as that balance comes down, I'm not looking to have the trade permit expire, but we'll see what we want to do as things get to where they need to be. And we'll figure out how we want to set up a pricing structure.
Motion to approve.
You already did that, but that's okay.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McRumba?
Aye.
Public hearing, just make sure. Anybody? No? Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Councilman Pardon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye, aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Attorney, I think you're up.
I only have one item. We recently received a proposed settlement offer in our Causeway Commerce Park for City of Benita Springs litigation. This has to do with some impact fee, or yes, impact fees and other fees and construction delays at the Causeway Park Commerce, case number twenty-one dash CA dash three eight three five. What I'd like to do, request this evening is I'd like to request the ability, I need some advice on whether or not, how to move forward with the settlement agreement. So I'd like to set up an executive session at some point in the future. Bring our litigation counsel on this one, David Theriak, in to meet with the counsel in a closed session to discuss the settlement offer. I have indicated to the attorneys for the developer that I'd be asking for this tonight. And we're probably looking to have something probably in April. So you'll be seeing me reach out to you or Debbie reaching out to you, try and get your availability. We'll, as we have in the past, we'll tack it on to either the beginning or the end of a meeting, depending on whether it's an evening or morning meeting.
Okay, thank you. Fourteen A, City Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Before I start my items, I did need to give an update from Lieutenant Decus with the LeCatti Sheriff's Office, that the person who robbed the Wells Fargo Bank is now in custody thanks to the night shift Community Policing Division. He was arrested without incident at forty-one and Riverview Chase by Benita Bay. So that is about to hit the media as we speak.
Well done, gentlemen, well done.
And with that, I would ask that Nicole come forward. As we discussed earlier within the workshop, we are moving forward with Phase Two of the ball fields. And that would require a budget transfer. What I wanted to remind you all is that, as we said in the workshop earlier, we do have a legislative appropriations ask of seven hundred fifty thousand. We know that the bills are moving forward in both the House and Senate. But in order for us to execute a contract, the funds need to be in that account item. That would give you options in the future to either, if we do receive the appropriations, you could then replenish back the general fund or you could choose to look, advance some of those other Phase Two, Phase Three items that we had looked at and continue. And then in the interim, Nicole will be getting prices on that as well. As part of that, I did ask Lisa to prepare for you, which you have one sheet on, on the general fund history and current projected balance. So she can review that with you, but-
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call. I think we're happy with you guys.
Okay.
Public comment?
No, you're not, oh, sorry, I'm not, go ahead.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Pardon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
I do have a couple of quick announcements as well and Baron Collier has reached out. If you recall, when they did their initial response to the request for proposals, they indicated that their second public workshop, they wanted to conduct that public workshop on-site at the location downtown. They would like to do that on March 19th. Typically, we don't utilize city locations for zoning applications or, but since this is a city project, we just wanted to make sure we received direction from, from council that you're comfortable with us doing that and we'll help promote the workshop as well.
That was the 16th?
19th.
Nineteen, but Baron Collier, March 19th.
19th.
I don't understand.
What time?
They're working on the time with us, though. We work on time, but before they did that, they want to make sure. What it is, is the second public workshop requirement-
But it would be outside, is that what you're saying?
Correct, with some tents and they wanted to do it on-site so it was accessible.
On-site, so, on city property.
It would be on city property, which we typically do not do for outside applicants, but since we are the property owner, that's why we wanted direction from.
That's a Saturday?
I, March 19th.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And you think the time?
We haven't worked out the time yet, that was the date there.
It's more likely to be like in the morning after, you know?
We'll have to communicate with them, I'm not, I'm not sure.
They were thinking around four, four to six.
Is it important we're here? It's my son's birthday, I'm not gonna be here, so just letting you know that.
It's my husband's birthday too.
There's two of us who are out, so if we're, we have to be there.
Well, do we, actually, the guy's not gonna be there.
You do not need to be there, actually, because you would reserve your public comment later on.
Thank you.
We're gonna vote on these.
No, no, I just needed to see it, the direction that we were comfortable there. On April 13th, Matt will be conducting a, with, with our consultants, a workshop here at City Hall at 5:30 for the Goodwin Street project. So, those folks will be notified that this is the improvements on Goodwin Street that we've been discussing, the multi, multi-use path and the roadway. And we'll be sending all these out by email as well, that's for the public. And then on April 14th, as a reminder, you previously approved in the last city council meeting, Department of Transportation to hold their PD and E workshop for the Benita Beach Road South, Old 41 Corridor, and that's gonna be at the Recreation Center. So we'll make sure an email goes out with all of these dates as well. Just a reminder, our next meeting, March 16th, is at 9:00 a.m. At that meeting, you're gonna have a presentation by our Code Enforcement Department Neighborhood Services in combination with community policing.
All right, very good.
What is that?
Mayor and council reports? Did I miss anything? Baseball, we got the baseball. Mayor and council reports? Amy?
I'm sorry, I always have something to say. I did want to commend our consultant, John DePalma, who met with me and, and Matt and some representatives from Pelican Landing concerning their concern about some traffic situations on the road that is the entrance to the Publix up in Pelican Landing. And they're, he, they did a report for, for us and looked at it and it was our first look at it and he did a really excellent job, so I just want to commend them. I also want to say that I attended the Horizon Council meeting and they had the National Flood Insurance Program review with a panel and it was very interesting and I shared some of the things that came out of it with Arlene, where I think we might want to share some of the information with our people and she's gonna follow up on it. And I did want to recognize Ukraine and offer my prayers to those people who are striving so hard to, and courageously to maintain their independence. And that's it for me.
Fred?
Oh, okay. First thing, I'm doing this as kind of a public service comment, hoping that it gets out on TV. There are a number of people that don't get building permits for anything from a minor improvement to a major improvement. What everybody needs to know is when you don't get a permit, the insurance policies of today have a little clause in it and it basically says, if you have a claim that they can show resulted from work being done without a permit, work being done that doesn't comply with code, your claim is null and void. And we have big disasters, they send in the inspectors from the insurance companies and they ferret that out and a lot of claims are denied, so it does not pay to save a few hundred bucks on getting a permit, especially things like windows, re-roofing, whatever. So I don't think everybody knows that, so that's why I told, the session's winding up, we're gonna have a full disclosure of finance that we're gonna have to fill out on new form, not like we do now. But, the people in the session, the representatives, senators, they all have the same thing, so they're not picking on us. A lot of the bills that would be problematic for the cities are not gonna make it because they're, they're running out of time. I think this week is the last of the committee hearings. I think in general, we did pretty good. There's a couple of bills that are problematic, but, so that, that's my report, thank you.
That's it. Jesse, I guess?
Yes, sir, real quick, I went to the Lover's Key event, this might even have been before the last meeting, but at that meeting, one of the things that happened was the FGCU, the doctors that were on the panel with Matt, reached out to me regarding some issues they're having getting buoys. And they're in the process of getting prices and then they're gonna get back to us. And then the question would be, you know, would the city, they need a body that would sponsor it, so it's buoys within Estero Bay, so it would have to be, the body would have to be county or the body would have to be the city of Benita. So, bottom line, they're gonna get us dollar amount and then we'll see if it would be a partnership with the county or if it's a small amount, maybe it's something we would do, but it's, I won't get into the details, but aquatically it's important and it shouldn't be a big deal, it's out in Estero Bay. So, when they come back to me, I'll come back to you guys. Number two, and I spoke with staff very briefly on it and it may or may not be anything, but it's worth looking into and thinking about in regards to the traffic that we have down over by docks. I had a constituent who, who actually sent me a video and then I had somebody else bring it up to me from a county level too. And they were showing me a video of people going by docks and, you know, they hit the light and they're saying half the problem is, you know, people are stopping every two minutes because somebody is hitting it. Has anybody thought of doing, you know, a mini pedestrian overpass at docks? And then they wouldn't have to stop the traffic every two minutes and people could just go over. I don't know if that's reasonable or not, you know, from a traffic standpoint, but we have people who could look at it and I wouldn't want to dismiss anything like that out of, you know, out of me saying that might not be the answer. It may be a piece, it may be nothing, but I think it's worth looking at, so.
Jesse, I would suggest to put the crosswalk north of Doc's Beach House, a couple hundred feet or 25 feet, rather than put it right in the middle of all the turn lanes and everything else. The crosswalk's in the wrong spot.
That could be part of it too, so.
And that would just be moved and made the people go on the other side of Access 1, Doc's Beach House, Regional Park, Forester Road, you know?
Maybe they'll think of that, I'm not asking-
That's the kind, you know, that is the kind of flashing light that we were talking about. It's all solar.
Right. So-
You got so much pedestrian traffic that, you know, it's off and on and, you know, it's gotta keep flowing.
Can I finish?
I was gonna, I was gonna help you.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I, we had a very, Pelican Landing had a very good experience going to our traffic engineer who is on retainer for us. So if there is a problem, I suggest you have him take a look at that area and see if he comes up with some suggestions.
I think DPZ is on retainer for us still, so I think-
No, it's, it's John Big-
John, we've got several, so with Beach Road, DPZ, we have Ian Lockwood and we have John DePalma, so.
What I'm saying that they would look at the entire, you know, we, we are not traffic people.
Exactly.
And our experience with Pelican Landing is we had like 30 people writing, writing to us with solutions to the problem. Not one of them was reasonable, you know? So it was much better to go to a professional and he put them all together and came up with some other ideas. So, that's just my suggestion. It worked very well for us.
And I think, so, the conversation with Arlene and Matt was simply, you know, this has come up, you know, it may or may not, I'm not a traffic guy, I can't tell you if that's, if that's reasonable, you know, aren't they offsetting like, hey, you know, I've never heard anybody suggest it, so maybe we can at least suggest, and maybe there's a reason it hasn't been suggested.
You know, you got people in wheelchairs going up and-
That's part of it, I imagine, the ADA side is probably complicated. Either way, we'll find out what the answers are, so.
We will.
I just wanted to bring it up and let you guys know that-
There is a, there is a big problem there, I agree with you.
That's it.
We would also communicate, we did make indication to Lee County of these, of the concerns that have been talked about, so we'll continue communication with them as well.
Okay, and then the last thing, I just want to give a shout out to LCSO. That's so great, what you said about them catching the bank robber that quickly and I know my good friend, my brother Kermit will love that I'm about to say that the guy needs to enjoy his stay at the Mercino Motel, because that's his new thing when he catches one of the bad guys, so, enjoy your stay, that's all I have to say, Rob[1728.56]